Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I want to welcome all of you to the November 5th, 2012, our City Council Meeting here in Morganton. I want to welcome everybody. We've got a good crowd. We've got to honor some people. And I'll start in right now with Sheldon Stevenson leading us with our invocation. Steve?
I'm older than anybody here, but I thought I'd hold before you, this is the most severe storm in the northeast that I've ever seen in my life. And so, it comes, I come to you with that on my heart and mind, and raise the question before us, how do we respond to this very serious thing that's hit in this part of our country? I know one thing we'll do, of course, is support the Red Cross and the Salvation Army and people like that who are really in there working. How do we respond? I heard a song, you know, the verses of it, verse was something like this, "When we walk through the storm, we hold our heads up high, and don't be afraid of the dark." When you walk through the storm, hold your head up high, and don't be afraid of the dark. I wondered about how people can respond to this, and in my way, I was just trying to think through how that might be. I wonder if some people have wondered where Noel and the ark was when the flood came to help him out and so on. I wonder if God is punishing those guys up north, we call them Yankees. You know, you're thinking, God has worked on that anyway. You think that we have done something wrong in our keeping of the environment, so we helped some of these things to happen and so on. How do we respond to this? Well, when you walk through the storm, you hold your head up high, and you're not afraid of the dark. I wanted to hold before you, of course, how important the presence of God in our lives is as we respond to this great need. I could repeat that, you know, time after time because it's so important and so on. But the real question that I think I would hold before us is, how do we respond? As individuals, how do we respond? And with that, holding that before you, I would like to offer the prayer of Saint Francis, which has some to do something this, you may have heard this much before, but may we pray. Lord, make me an instrument of thy peace. Where there is hatred, let me sow love. Where there is fear, let me have trust. Where there is hurting, help me to be a healing presence, Lord. Where your Spirit is needed to give people courage, help us to carry that Spirit, Lord, so we may help people who need the Spirit of God. Lord, be with these people and all of their needs. Touch them with love and care, and do in their lives what they need to have you do. Lord, when we walk through the storm, help us to hold our heads up high, and not be afraid of the dark. Amen.
Thank you, Steve. Introduction of our City Council. On my far right is Dr. Alfred Hamer, Councilman. Councilman Forrest Fleming, Louie Vina, our City Attorney. I'm Mel Cohen, your mayor. Sally Sandy is our City Manager. Sidney Simmons, City Councilman. John Cantrell, City Councilman. And Kelly Russell is the Recording Secretary. And Becky Brinkley, over in the corner, is interpreting for our deaf community. And I'll never do that, Becky, but I want to thank you for coming month after month after month. We greatly appreciate it. This time, I'd like to ask Lee Anderson, who, getting a 25-year pin. He is the Director of Development and Design, and probably will get a 50-year pin before I'm gone.
Got young kids, I probably will.
Congratulations, sir. Glad you dressed up.
Appreciate it.
Here's your pin, and you can say anything you'd like to say.
Don't plan on saying a whole lot. 25 years, when you think about it, that's a long time. And spending in this community, I still enjoy coming to work every day. It's tough sometimes, but public service is a part of me. I certainly enjoy it. Hopefully, I've made a difference to some degree. Hopefully, we continue to make a difference, and we'll just keep moving forward. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Lee. Appreciate your service. At this time, as public advocacy issues and strategies, and before I get into several things I want to do in honoring some people and organizations, I want to talk about one of Morganton's finest. Benny Davis passed away. He was a 30-plus-year veteran with our Fire Department and our Public Safety Department. He started out as a fire captain, and when they changed over to Public Safety where he would start patrolling, he became a Public Safety Captain, went to BLET school, because he loved to fight fires. But he crossed over and did both jobs, and he was a tremendous, just a wonderful individual. And he passed away this past Friday. And I want to wish his family all prayers from the City of Morganton and all the people that he protected during the years he was with the City of Morganton. And leads into what Steve was talking about, about the, you know, just people in this community, and I've lived here all my life, so I can afford to say it, more, the local people that have grown up here tend to complain more so than the people that have come here from other parts of the country. And I know that, and I was one of them 27, 30 years ago. You're more apt to complain rather than try to correct, so I wanted to try to correct some things, and became a volunteer and an elected official. But if you look at what happened in Breezy Point, New York, where approximately 80 to 100 homes were wiped out by fire, completely gone, and families don't know what they're going to do. I mean, it's amazing to know, and we complain if garbage is not picked up today. And all we've got to do is call up Public Works, and they'll come pick it up. But these people won't have to worry about it for a long time because we don't know where they're going to live. They don't know where they're going to live. It's a very sad time, and of course, I hope all of you, I learned how to do it on my iPhone, which I'm still learning how to do it, and I've had it two months, but I text a donation to the Red Cross, and I hope everybody will do that, that'll watch this on a rerun or watch it live tonight, because they need help. I'd love to be able, at my age, to go up and help people, but I don't have that capability of helping build a home or helping to rebuild infrastructure. Sewer plant in Maryland, I noticed on TV, after the storm started up the coast and went into Maryland, a sewer plant completely washed out, and the filth in the sewer out into the tributaries in the river. I mean, things, horrendous things that we don't appreciate as a Morgantonian and a Burke Countyan, that we need to, because I'm telling you, there, it's still chaos up in New York, and there's a nor'easter coming Wednesday that may put some of them back another two, three weeks before they'll get electricity. And I just hope we'll remember them in our prayers, and I hope you will, make a donation to the Red Cross or the Salvation Army. Again, keep them in your prayers. And now, if you would come, where are you? Hey, if you come forward over here, and I'm going to read this resolution. Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week, proclamation from November 11 through 17, 2012. Whereas for the past several years, the National Coalition for the Homeless and the National Student Campaign Against Hunger and Homelessness has sponsored National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. And the Burke County Continuum of Care has been actively working to end hunger and homelessness in Morganton and Burke County. And whereas the purpose of this proclamation is to educate the public about the many reasons people are hungry and homeless, including the shortage of affordable housing in Morganton for very low-income residents, and to encourage support for homeless assistance service providers as well as community service opportunities for students and school service organizations. And whereas, their organization is committed to sheltering and providing supportive services as well as meals and food supplies to the homeless, including Alpha, Burke County Public Schools, Burke United Christian Ministries, Catawba Valley Behavioral Health Care, Christ-Centered Recovery Program, Department of Social Services, Easter Seals, House of Refuge, Olive Hill Community Economic Development Corporation, Partners Behavioral Health Management, the Meeting Place Mission, Veterans, and many more community partners. And whereas, the theme of National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week 2012 is bringing America home. And whereas, the Morganton City Council recognizes that hunger and homelessness continues to be a serious problem for many individuals and families in Morganton, and I'll extend it to all over the country. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Morganton City Council hereby proclaims November 11 through 17, 2012, as Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. Be it further resolved that the Morganton City Council encourage all citizens to recognize that many people do not have housing and need support from citizens and from public, private, nonprofit service entities. Signed this day, November 5th, 2012. Mel Cohen, Mayor. Sally Sandy, City Clerk. All in the form of a motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. That was a long one.
But you did very well.
Thank you. If you'd be able to speak your name, where you reside, and tell us a little story.
Okay, I will. My name's Joe Marx, and I work with the Meeting Place. And it is an honor to be here, and it's also a very humbling experience to be here as well. As I was stated before, and we're reminded very quickly with major natural disasters like we see up in the northeast, and no, they're not being punished because I'm one of those Yankees too. I guess I'm a damn Yankee because I stayed here. But that causes homelessness. A lot of us think often that, of the chronic homeless, you know, the guy or the woman sitting on the corner because of drugs, alcohol, because they don't care, people just don't wake up and decide to be homeless. That constitutes maybe 12 to 14 percent. Natural disasters, fires, deaths, all sorts of things cause homelessness. Untreated mental illness. You know, we don't wake up in the morning and say, you know, I think I want to be bipolar today, and I'm not going to take my medication. Well, those things happen. And because of a number of agencies and because of loving and caring folks like yourself, we do bring awareness to it, and with that awareness, we find some support as well. Some of the events that we have locally planned to bring that awareness is, one is, Monday we will be part of the Veterans Program that's taking place at Foothills. We have a small segment there to let the veterans that are there know where they can come to get some services if they are homeless. On Tuesday, we have a tour of a number of the facilities, of which, by ticket only, I gave our Honorable Mayor two tickets earlier. He said that he wouldn't be able to attend, but it's on Tuesday from 9:00 to 12:15 to tour some of the facilities that are helping the people so that you can get a more of a face of what this homelessness and what it is. On Wednesday, we have a homelessness forum, which I invite all of you to attend. It's Wednesday evening from 7:00 to 9:00 at the First United Methodist Church. We'll have a speaker, but more importantly, we're going to have five different individuals talking about who are either experiencing homelessness now, or because of certain agencies and help, have found their way out of homelessness and are employed and living on their own now. Talk to all of us so that we can get that picture, so we can get that face of homelessness. And on Friday, hopefully, we're going to have the Faces of Hope Womenless Beauty Pageant. So we're still looking for contestants, and I think that all the men up there would look wonderful in dresses. And I've got a wig for all of you. I'll find one. So if you're interested, give me a call. And the other thing, too, all week long, it's paint the town purple, and local businesses will be supporting us by putting up purple ribbons in their businesses. And I encourage everybody that week to wear purple because that is the color of homelessness. And if people are asking you why, tell them why. Thank you, and have a wonderful evening. God bless.
Joe, thank you for coming. We appreciate it. Appreciate the word. We usually let our youngest City Councilman dress up in a pageant like that.
Okay.
And we will send you his name and a picture.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Joe. Come back and see you. Okay. Fred Roberson, if you would come to the front right up there, and I'm going to read a proclamation for you. Mayor's Certificate of Commendation Given to Fred Roberson in Grateful Recognition for Outstanding Service to the Community. The City of Morganton thanks you for your 29 years of service as a member of the Human Relations Commission for the City of Morganton. This commendation is to recognize your strong belief in and unrelenting loyalty to the commission. It also recognizes your selfless efforts and the countless hours of work you have given to make Morganton a fairer and more wonderful place to live. Citizens like you are what helped to make our area the wonderful place it is to live, work, and play, and for that, we commend you. Given on this day, November 5th, 2012, Mel Cohen, Mayor. Sally Sandy, City Clerk. Form of a motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Fred, you joined when I named the first group, and I want to thank you very much. And I hope you will come from here on out as an ex officio member. Okay? Okay? And that's for you. And if you want to say anything, you're welcome to. If not, you don't have to.
Okay. I'd just thank the council for allowing me to be a leader of a group of people that are very concerned about the conditions in the county at the time that I started. As you know, we was having some racial disturbance, and with the help of my committee, we had the bottom of the Recreation Building, and we had different people come in with different varieties of subjects to help band the group together and let each group know that we consider what we can do for the other. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Fred. Mr. Salisbury, you can walk up that way. I'll cover your seat. Mayor's Certificate of Commendation Given to Robert Salisbury in grateful recognition for outstanding service to this community. The City of Morganton thanks you for your over 30 years of service as a member of the Historic Properties Commission for the City of Morganton. The commendation is to recognize your strong belief in and unrelenting loyalty to the commission. It also recognizes your selfless efforts and the countless hours of work you have given to ensure that Morganton's historic properties and grounds will be preserved for generations to come. Citizens like you are what helped to make our area the wonderful place it is to live, to work, and to play, and for that, we commend you. Given on this day, November 5th, 2012, Mel Cohen, Mayor. Sally Sandy, City Clerk. All in the favor of a motion. All in favor, say aye. Robert, thank you very much. You can still do another 30 years. It's a long trip from the country, I know, but thank you again.
Thank you. I'm honored. There are a lot of good citizens in Morganton that can take over and do a good job. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Be careful going out. Minister of Power Agency Number One, Sally.
Tonight, we have exciting news, and we have honored guests with us from Levittown, and they are here because they have participated in an energy efficiency grant program offered through a partnership with the cities and with the city and Electricities. And for that participation, they are receiving a rebate in the amount of $25,000 for their lighting project that they have done at their facility, and we are very pleased to have them here tonight. Brooks is also here. This is kind of what it's all about for us, to work with our customers and to work with the citizens and try to make a better situation, and I think this is a good example of that. And we are very happy to be partners with you in this community.
Leonard, if you want to say a few words, or Randy, either one, come to the microphone. Leonard Cosby Plant Manager is here tonight, and Randy Kaiser is the Plant Maintenance Supervisor.
Hi. I'd just like to take an opportunity to thank the partnership that the City of Morganton has provided us as well over the years. As you know, we opened in 1966 out on Industrial Boulevard, and we continue to, through the partnership with you guys, the Electricities Group, and Randy, our maintenance manager, is just doing excellent jobs in trying to upgrade the facility, make us room for additional growth, and there's a lot of good stuff that's coming forward. And I think the partnership through programs like this right here works for all of us, and I look forward for a much longer partnership with you guys.
Thank you, Leonard. And the growth part that you just mentioned is great for our community and county and employment. Thank you a lot. Bless all of you. Thank you. Consent agenda, Sally.
Okay. The consent agenda before you tonight includes three individual items. We consider those to be non-controversial, and would ask that you consider them in one motion unless there's someone that would like an item removed and discussed separately. For those of you viewing at home, those three items include minutes from the October 1st Council Meeting, tax releases in the amount of $1,583.55, and then consideration of a request to declare as surplus equipment our old election equipment. And we have received a proposal to purchase that from Yancey County.
Just sell it, mean.
I mean, to sell that. Yancey County's going to purchase it from us.
Right. Okay.
All right. To make the motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion second. All in favor, say aye. Okay. Parents, does anyone in the audience would like to come before the Morganton City Council doesn't have anything else on the agenda tonight? Moving on, public hearing. I'll open up a public hearing for rezoning .67 acres of property located at 504 East Union Street from General Business to O&amp;I Office and Institutional submitted by Foothill Services, Sally.
This request relates to two lots that are situated mid-block in the 500 block of East Union Street. On one lot, there's currently a residential structure, and that is being used as an office. Also, an accessory building that has also been converted to office space. Paved parking lot that serves both of the buildings that are on the property. Staff has reviewed it and recommends approval of the request. The Planning Commission also heard this and recommends approval of this request. Public hearing advertised on October 18th and the 25th, and first-class mail notices were mailed to adjoining property owners.
Anyone in the audience would like to speak for or against? Close the public hearing. Counsel.
Motion to certify that this zoning request is in conformance with Morganton's adopted Mission 2030 Land Development Plan. Motion to adopt an ordinance zoning 0.67 acres located at 504 East Union Street from General Business to Office and Institution.
Second.
Have a motion second. Now, two motions, so we're second, doing it for both. Right. Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Okay, Mr. Dill. Next item is a public hearing I'll open up, Section 9-4008 SR3 of the zoning ordinance to eliminate the resident owner criteria for accessory apartments in association with single-family dwelling. I'm going to let you go on, Sally.
This is an amendment that was initiated by city staff in response to a ruling by the North Carolina Supreme Court, and Lee Anderson is here tonight and can talk to you about the details. Since he's been here 25 years, he ought to know what he's doing.
Ought to.
I have to pull out my 25-year glasses. Just know how to do that. Recently, a court case was brought to our attention. The North Carolina Supreme Court has ruled, and this has been consistent in their rulings, that land use controls are limited for the City of Morganton, for city governments in general, and also county governments, that in association, when you're adopting zoning ordinance, you cannot regulate ownership of the property. In our accessory apartment ordinance, there are several criteria that we have in that ordinance, but one of those is that you cannot have an accessory apartment on your property in a single-family area unless you are the owner resident of the primary residence. Now, we adopted this ordinance back in the 90s, probably as a response as our population was growing older, we saw more people bringing their parents back, demand to have additional units in the backyard. We had more and more requests at the Board of Adjustment level. So, in order to try to accommodate those kind of things, and as we, in the last four or five years, we've seen more requests for students and kids and all those kind of things coming back. But it also is open for income for folks to have, if they have an accessory apartment in their backyard or within their own dwelling. But the North Carolina Supreme Court says we cannot regulate the ownership of the property, and so, an amendment is recommended to you by the staff and by the Planning and Zoning Commission to eliminate that particular item within our ordinance, and I believe you have that in your package, the existing ordinance with the stricken item. And that's what I'm looking for. It would be Paragraph 1, resident owner, the property owner must be a resident of the principal dwelling unit. This ordinance would remove that item. All of the other criteria, such as how it meets the minimum housing codes, the occupancy limits, the number of front doors, the number of bedrooms, the gross floor area, all those things would remain in place. And any size of a lot for an accessory building, all that stays in place. So, we recommend that to be approved.
Okay. Anyone wishing to speak for or against? Close the public hearing. Counsel.
Motion to adopt an ordinance amendment to Section 9-408 SR3 for the zoning ordinance to eliminate the resident owner criteria for accessory departments in association with single-family dwelling.
Second.
Have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Other business. Consideration of voluntary annexation petition submitted by the Broadway Group LLC, Sally.
Broadway Group LLC has requested that you consider annexing .64 acres of property. It's located at 1025 North Green Street. The city limits currently split this property, and approximately one-half of it is in the city and one-half of it is out. Petitioners in the process of trying to develop the property for commercial purposes. Water and sewer are located along the Green Street, North Green Street in front of the site. Staff recommends approving this, and if you wish to approve this, you really have three things that happen. You would adopt a resolution to investigate the annexation petition. There'd be a certification as to that sufficiency, and then you would adopt a resolution that would call for a public hearing to consider the annexation at the next meeting.
Okay. I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution requesting the City Clerk to certify the annexation petition.
Second.
Have a motion second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
And I can do that.
All right. Motion to adopt the resolution setting the public hearing date for Monday, December 3rd, 2012, to consider this request for annexation petition submitted by the Broadway Group LLC. Have a motion second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
So we will hold a public hearing at the next council meeting.
All right. Consideration of Grant Awards of Entitlement Funds to Nonprofits.
Lisa.
Lisa. Thank you for being with us, Lisa.
Thank you. This goes right along with your Hunger and Homeless Week, so this is perfect timing. This is our 2012 fiscal year action plan for our nonprofits to grant This is our 2012 fiscal year action plan for our nonprofits, to grants nonprofits that we do every year. This year, we had three that applied, and that is Options Incorporated, and they requested $3,700. Outreach Center, they requested $11,000, and the House of Refuge requested $5,000. We did have a little leftover, $4,000, and we recommend that we put that in our small business loan program, the balance of that. Do you have any questions?
Make a motion to award fiscal year 2012 entitlement funds to nonprofits as stated and to place the $4,000 balance of funds into the small business loan program.
Second.
Have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you, Lisa. Consideration of amendment to the schedule of fees and charges for compas, Sally.
You'll recall that during budget time, we looked at the upcoming year and decided at that time that effective with January 1st, that the deal for analog basic cable, basic cable would go from $57.95 to $60.95. We had had the opportunity since that time to look at one other increase we'd like for you to consider, and that is broadcast basic. That is what we call our bare bones basic. That is currently at $21.95. In order for those customers to pay their share of the retransmission fees that we were able to negotiate that go into effect, we recommend that going up $1 a month, and that would be to $22.95. That would be effective if you consider this January 1st. So, it would be with the January billing. In addition to that, the premium channels have sent their yearly increases to us, and we are recommending increases in those. HBO to go from $14.95 a month to $15.95 a month. Cinemax from $12.95 to $13.95. Combo of those two, $24.95 to $25.95. Showtime, $11.95 to $12.95. Starz, $10.95 to $11.95. And then the package that we offer where you get all four is currently $43.95. We would recommend that going to $45.95. And again, those are effective January 1st as well. And Bill Harkins is here if anybody has any questions and wants to hear more about that.
Well, tell us a little bit about the chore that you went through, and people don't quite understand what the, what was it?
Retransmission.
Retransmission. Yes. I mean, this is what they put on to us, and it's a every-three-year deal now, isn't it?
Yes, they, but those retransmission agreements have been around since like the early nineties, and they never used to charge us. We would trade them advertising or something, but a few years back, they started actually billing us on a per-subscriber basis. And it wasn't so bad the first time they did it, but then they decided they really wanted to make a lot of money off these fees. For example, last year, it went up 36% on average between the channels, and through negotiations, we do a three-year deal. I was able to get that down to 14% for this coming year, but that's still 50% in two years. That's a lot of money. So, as, since most of those fees fall in the broadcast basic tier, which by the way, I think we have the best broadcast basic tier in the industry, because we include the superstations WGN, TBS, and we also include the Weather Channel in that tier, which Charter doesn't do that. I haven't seen anybody that does. So, it's quite a value at $22.95, the proposed rate. By comparison, Charter charges $2.04 more. They charge $24.99 for that same tier. It doesn't have those channels in it. But anyway, that's what the retransmission is. It'll be a little less of an increase next year, but then we go into negotiations again, and they have the same plan. They're gonna take a huge gouge in the first year, and then it's a little bit less each year after that, so.
You want to describe who they is?
They are all the broadcast stations, these ABC, NBC, CBS. We carry two of each of them and a few independents that we carry. We have ten of them altogether, ten stations, that we pay to.
To have them on the air.
Yeah.
Yeah. Didn't used to be that way.
No. I mean, one thing we thought about was why do we have two ABCs, two NBCs, two CBSs? But we have significant viewership of those out-of-market networks, so we decided last time that we would keep them, although I was able to use the fact that we had that option to greatly reduce their fees since they're out of market, which I'll continue to do the next time I negotiate with them. For the pay channels, they all go up about 5% a year, except for last year when we did an increase on HBO. We haven't raised rates on pay channels since over five years ago. Even though they've continued to go up, we've absorbed those costs and cut expenses in other ways, and, but it's got to the point where we have to add a little to each one of those, a dollar, and $2 on the all-four package. The good side is, they take that money. They aren't just showing you old movies anymore that you've already seen. They're creating new series like Homeland and various other ones. Each one of these stations is doing that. So, actually, you're paying a little more, but you're getting more for your money now than you were before. So, it's just something we don't like to do, but we have to do.
Well, and the unique thing about it is the City Council of Morganton has to be the one to raise the fees, and because it's our system, and among, I don't know how many now municipally-owned systems there are in America, there's several more in North Carolina that didn't used to be, and we set the rates, whereas we have a public group that sets the programming.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you, Bill.
You're welcome.
Any questions of Bill, by the way? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Motion to amend the schedule of fees and charges for the proposed increases.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consideration of entering into a CDBG Small Business Loan Agreement with, can't pronounce it, Nancy, owners of R-Pro M-Tech LLC.
This is, Lisa talked earlier about us putting more money into our small business loan program, and that's exactly what this is. This is another small business loan that we are funding through, or asking to fund through our CDBG entitlement monies in that program, and Lee's here to talk about it.
Raj and Nancy Havary, owners of R-Pro M-Tech LLC, submitted a request through our Small Business Loan Program. They are asking for $30,000 to grow and expand their small family business that's located out on Jump Street on 70 East going toward Drexel. I had the opportunity to go out and tour the plant the other day. It's quite impressive what a ink, what it takes to print on your Coke bottle or on any of the labels that you have, anything, water bottles, all that stuff, the chemistry and the knowledge it takes to invent the inks and things, the water-based inks that the federal government now requires that used to be more chemical-based. That's the kind of business that these folks are in. It's nice to see small businesses taking chances, trying to grow, and trying to add people. They anticipate adding up to eight employees over the next few years. They're gonna move their business inside the city limits over off of West Fleming Drive. They worked out an agreement with the landlord, and they hope to be in operation there, I believe, in December. So, if you have any questions for them, feel free to do so. This money is used to employ folks that are low in moderate income, and of course, there's other positions added as well. And so, if you have any questions, feel free to do that. Our loan program, just for your knowledge, this will be the 10th small business loan that we've made over the past three years in this program. We've loaned over a quarter of a million dollars, and we've seen ten very, very good and strong small businesses continue, they continue to make payments to us on a routine basis, and we feel good. It's a good program. It's been well-received, and I applaud you for, you know, the foresight in putting that kind of money towards your small businesses in Morganton. It's a good thing. It really helps folks out. We've had four startup businesses, and this will be our sixth expansion business, and they range all types. We've got retail, we've got manufacturing, we've got a trucking company, we've got service businesses, we've got restaurants, we've got cake shops. We've done a little bit of everything. So, we try to spread the money around and look at different types of businesses, and I think so far, we've got a winery. All these businesses have growth opportunities, and I applaud your efforts of trying to put folks back to work here.
Sometime soon, maybe we can take a tour of their plant and maybe some of the other businesses once they get situated in their new location.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. All right, guys, we need a motion.
Move to enter into a $30,000 CDBG loan agreement with Mr. and Mrs. Havary, owners of R-Pro M-Tech LLC.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Done an outstanding job, Lee and Lisa, and all the ones and the people that you've helped out, and we wish you all very much luck, good luck, and we hope to make a tour one day soon. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right. Consideration of a resolution concerning loss of transitional whole harmless reimbursement funds, Sally.
Back in 2002, there was a deal cut between the North Carolina counties and the state of North Carolina, and it was dealing with Medicaid and how the counties and the state handle Medicaid payments. In that deal, sales tax monies were redistributed differently in order to cut that deal. So, in the process, because cities get sales tax monies, sales tax monies redistributed to us from the state, and since we don't really have anything in that particular argument for the Medicaid funds, there was a deal cut, and for ten years, we were given whole harmless monies. In essence, the money that we were losing because the deal, the state cut that deal with the counties, they were returning it back to the cities so that we would be kept whole. The idea was that during those ten years, back in 2002, that the economy would improve, that sales tax would improve, and that ultimately, our sales tax dollars would grow, and we wouldn't need that in order to be held whole anymore. Well, that is expiring in 2012, and as we all might have guessed, that growth has not occurred. And so, we are trying to ask, and worked on this the last legislative session and before that as well, asking the General Assembly to extend the whole harmless monies. For us, in this year, we have $95,000 budgeted for whole harmless, so if they don't extend that, and that's probably the amount of money that we're gonna be looking for in next year's budget with no revenue to replace it, at least where sales tax dollars are considered. So, this is a resolution asking them to please consider extending that so that we can give the economy another chance to pick back up and sales tax dollars can grow.
I move to approve the resolution concerning the loss of transitional whole harmless reimbursement funds.
Second. Okay, we have a motion second. Any discussion? Of course, that 95,000 is a what, about, close to a cent, not quite a cent?
It's two-thirds of a cent on the tax rate, roughly.
Yeah.
Now, do we?
And I will tell you that the House, last session, this was okay, the House supported this, but the Senate didn't take it up.
Will our lobbyist take this too?
Yes, and our lobbyist was working on this last year as well, so it's not a new mission for us. At the recent annual league meeting, there was some talk amongst communities, and there was some rallying of communities to try to, you know, speak as a group and try to make an impression upon them. I will tell you that we are very fortunate. Lenore is one of the big losers in this, to the tune of $600,000. Zebulon is also one that's in about that same kind of category. So, we are fortunate in that should this happen, we're talking $95,000, although that $95,000 is very important to us.
Did I get a motion? You got a motion?
Next motion.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Consideration of appointments to the Human Relations Commission. Courtney Tate of Freedom High School Junior and Courtney Mull, Patton High School Junior. Those are my appointments, I believe. Are they not, Sally?
I think they're all counsel, actually.
Motion to appoint Courtney Tate and Courtney Mull to the Human Relations Commission for the year 2012 and '13. Second. Any, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Consideration of application for a certificate of taxicab franchise, Sally.
Can we do the 30-day notice? Did you skip that?
Yeah, I'm sorry. You know, 30-day notice of boards and commissions will do next month. If I can find it.
Vacants.
Yeah, Historic Properties, one vacancy, and BDI Board of Directors, City Appointed, one vacancy. And we'll do that next month. And now, a consideration application for certificate of taxicab franchise, Sally.
Taxicab franchises are, come before you each year for renewal, and they're required to come before you for two meetings, for two readings, and so this would be the first reading for these, and we have presented to you a reapplication for Michael W. Gilbert, which is Ace Cab, for Larry Seeger's Claudia Morales, and those are the three that are coming before you, and if you choose to do that tonight, then we will bring it back to you next month for the second reading and ultimate passage.
Motion for first approval of issuance of taxicab franchise to Michael Gilbert, Ace Cab, Larry Seeger's City Cab, and Claudia Morales, Becerra Translation and Associates.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Anything further from any of the city council members, Sally, or Louis, or anybody? Meeting adjourned.